Okay, I'll start again. I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, April 11th, 2022. The time is 5:33 PM. And I will do a roll call from my far left.
Jenny Watt.
Lee Rodenberg, City Council.
Brenda Lycan, City Council.
Roger Henderson, City Council.
Robin Denson, Council.
Mary Barber, City Council.
Great, and Councilmember Storset, I believe, is zooming in. Has he checked in yet, Josh?
He is on this call. I think he can unmute himself.
Seth, do you hear us? Can you hear us okay? Can you unmute? Well, I see that he's here, so hopefully, hopefully he will join us vocally in a moment.
Josh, what does it need to hit unmute? Is it star six or star nine?
He's on a computer, so he can just hit the unmute button on his microphone. So I've sent him the instructions to do that.
And then Josh, again, there's a little pop-up, just a little housekeeping. It just, we just need to hit the got it button. Is that on the computer that's set up down here next to Tony?
Yes, yeah, that should just go away. You can click it.
On that, got it. Perfect, thank you. Okay, we're in this new world of hybrid meetings, so everybody bear with us. Would you all join us and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your government, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing...
Your Honor, we did want to move the executive session up to after the presentations.
Yes.
So if there's no objection from Council?
Is there any objection from Council to move that up? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We have, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And who seconded that? I didn't catch it. Was that Lee or Jenny? Jenny, okay. Or both. All right, thank you so much. Okay, we have a couple of presentations this evening. The first is recognition of our Parks Appreciation Day, and we have a few slides provided by our Parks Manager, Matthew Keough. It was a fantastic weekend. I had the pleasure of visiting all three of our parks and getting to see our volunteers and our staff and our Parks Commissioners. And my dog is in the picture. They insisted. His name is Lewis. We had just a blast. There were so many volunteers. It was just amazing to see. And one great example of the difference that volunteers make in our community comes from this past weekend. There were over 50 volunteers who contributed nearly 200 hours of public service in three parks, as you saw Shaw Park, Wilkinson Farm Park, and then Veteran Memorial, Kalam Veteran Memorial Park. This day of service is led by our volunteer Parks Commissioners, who give their time throughout the year to steward Gig Harbor's parks. The projects accomplished this weekend complement the regular labor of Parks Operations staff, such as their professional clearing of the historic Holly Forest at Wilkinson Farm Park, which is that second slide. And Matthew says, "It was a bad weekend to be a weed trying to make a home in the planting beds of Shaw Park and Veteran Memorial Park." They did so amazing. That looks, they were already well into this when I got there, but it looks fantastic. It was in dire need of some weed pulling, and they had just wheelbarrows and trucks full. It was, it was just amazing. The community supported the event through donations of refreshments. I saw Crumble cookie boxes. Thank you, Crumble. Park staff who came out on a Saturday morning, and then myself and Council for the resources, such as the dump truck and dump trucks to take away blackberry remnants. We just want to give a huge, huge thank you to everybody involved, especially our community of volunteers. There's one of our Parks Commissioners, Louise Teeman, standing with Matt Keough. I took that picture. And just thanks to everybody to make this a successful event every April. It was just so great to have this in person again. So thank you to all of our Parks Commissioners. I don't see any of them here today, but thank you all. Big round of applause for them. And to our city staff, Jessie was amazing, lifting those garbage cans of blackberry bushes over her head. So we just appreciate you all so very much. And next, I am going to call up Chief Bucy to introduce some of our very important volunteers. And as you're coming up, I'm going to read this proclamation. "Thank you all for being here. I wish our camera could show you all to the public that's online. Whereas volunteering of an individual's time and resources is an essential part of our Gig Harbor pride, and whereas each year many of our Gig Harbor residents commit their time and talents to improve the quality of life for our entire community, and whereas our Gig Harbor volunteers show every day through their dedication and actions that they truly care about our community, and whereas the volunteer spirit that helped to build the Gig Harbor community is alive and strong today. Now therefore, I, Tracy Markley, Mayor of the City of Gig Harbor, do hereby proclaim the week of April 19th through April 25th, 2022 as Volunteer Appreciation Week and encourage all citizens to express their appreciation to our volunteers for their selfless efforts to promote and help meet the needs of Gig Harbor. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Gig Harbor to be affixed this 11th day of April, 2022."
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. As you know, the city relies on dozens of volunteers, all the way from the people that get up at 4:30 in the morning to water our baskets in the summer that make the town look great, to people that sit on our boards and commissions and other things throughout the city that I probably am not even aware of. But representing the volunteer groups throughout the city tonight are our COPS volunteers. COPS stands for Citizens Offering Police Support. And many of these people have been with us for years. And so by name, I'd like to introduce Tim Jones, Alan Beck, Diane Bertram, who you may recognize in half a dozen other roles in the city, right? Larry Geringer and Ed Meyer. And they've, they really contribute literally over 1,000 hours a year to the support of our police department, doing things like running errands to the uniform shop or the crime lab, or working in the office, or doing disabled parking enforcement, or helping at our community events, or doing vacation checks and things like that. So wonderful people that really make the community better, and they're here to accept the Volunteer Appreciation Week proclamation on behalf of all of the city volunteers.
Yes.
So.
Let's send them around.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Did I see something on Channel 5 about our COPS?
You saw something on the News Tribune.
Oh, thank you.
Today, a video story and a print story.
Yes, yes. So thank you so much for everything you do in our community. Thanks for giving reminders about traffic issues. And thanks for all your help that you do carrying in things, so, and transporting things for our regular police officers. So I've worked with you a little bit, well, I sat with you during the Citizen Volunteer Academy, and you're a tough group, but thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all that you do, more than we can say. And to finish off our Volunteer Appreciation Week, thanks. We have a list on the screen of all of our different volunteer commissions, our Adopt a Road, Arts Commission, Civil Service Commission, COPS, who we just saw, Design Review Board, our Flower Basket Watering. Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tim Denson, for being a part of that for so many years. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Parks Appreciation Day, Parks Commission, Planning Commission, Police Explorers, Salary Commission, and our Scansy House Visitor Center. Thank you to all of you. Are there, is there anyone from any of these commissions here tonight so we can recognize you? Yes, I see Charlie from our Arts Commission. Thank you to all of our volunteers. All right, we will now adjourn to executive session to discuss potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 (I). We should return in about 20 minutes, so let's say, let's just say 6:05 to be safe. We might be back sooner. And action may be taken when we return. Thank you.
Okay, we have returned from executive session, so I'll let Josh start the recording again.
We are recording now.
Okay, thank you. The time is 6:04 PM. We've returned from executive session. Councilmember Rodenberg, do you have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to put forward. I move to authorize the mayor to initiate litigation pertaining to the portion of the city right of way adjacent to 6502 Watcha Drive as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion passes, seven zero or six, oh Seth, is Seth on? I don't know if he's back on.
I do not see him on.
Okay.
He's on yet.
Okay. We have a majority. Can we move on or do we need to wait for Seth to jump on?
You have a majority, you can move on.
Okay. All right, councilmember Lykens, do you have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding pertaining to statewide opioid legislation settlement in a manner substantially similar to that one, which was discussed in executive session.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, council. So, under the mayor's report tonight, I have one very important thing that I would like to do, and that is to thank our interim city administrator, Tony Piasseki, for all of his help and support and many, many hours of hard work. Tony came to us in, was it July or August?
It was July.
July, and has helped us through a very transitional time in the city. And I know for myself, I could not have done this transition without you, so I appreciate your help so much, more than I can say in words. And I know that the council has words of thanks as well, so councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. I had the pleasure of working with our city administrator, Mr. Piasseki, when he first came to Gig Harbor in 2018, and I have had the pleasure to continue to work with him in 2021 and '22. This city administrator brought with him years and years of successful experience. You brought calmness to the city. I am convinced that without city administrator Piasseki, we would have lost even more employees and more history of the workings of our city. City administrator Piasseki gave our staff the confidence that he had the reins of leadership and integrity and competency and kindness. I believe your ability to be a buffer gave our employees a little breathing space to do their best work for our citizens. Thank you for your show of respect to our employees. You have served the city of Gig Harbor and our citizens very well. You have served our employees exceptionally well. Thank you for your time and caring that you put into this interim job every day. I cannot think what you will do without your hour commute each way, twice a day coming back to the city and going home again. I know that you and your wife are off on the great American road trip. This will be an exciting adventure, and so have lots of fun. It is well deserved, and you deserve a great time. Thank you for your daily input into this community and sad city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Councilmember Barber.
Hi, Tony. In my experience, every good leader comes around at the exact time that you need a leader to come around. And I think that you definitely arrived at Gig Harbor at the appropriate time. And I know that staff, council, all of us appreciate your leadership. And I also had to say thank you for everything that you've done for me, and I'll speak for my other fellow new city council members, to help us feel welcome and learn, and we're still learning, but the ropes and how to get things done and treat people with respect in this city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Councilmember Lykens.
Yes, hi, thank you. I just had a quick statement for Tony. I just want to say from the first time I met you and I found you laughing at my jokes, I knew you were going to retire soon. They say that those who laugh the most are the ones retiring the soonest. I just have a quote from the poet Maya Angelou. She said, "People will often forget what you said. People will often forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." And in just a short time, you just made us feel welcomed, supported, listened to. Can't thank you enough. So, thanks.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, mayor. Tony, we haven't worked together for too long, but the time we have, I've been just amazingly impressed with your counsel, I'd call it, and it's always spot on. It's always like it fits in the middle of a road, which is hard to navigate sometimes. So, I appreciate it a lot, and I'm not much of a big speech maker, but I really want you to enjoy retirement this time. And not that I want to say stay retired, but I think you can enjoy it and still be busy. So, thank you very much for your service here, Tony. It's just been outstanding, and we are going to miss you. I personally are going to miss you a lot. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Roger. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo the sentiments everyone else has shared. Are you super uncomfortable right now, Tony?
Maybe.
Everyone's staring at me.
Or happy retirement.
Well, I just can't express enough my gratitude for all of your counsel. You just have such great wisdom. You're so down to earth and so funny. I appreciate your humor. But I felt really confident about any issue that we faced here at the city, because I think because of all your experience and just your innate sense of what's right. We could come to you and you would give us really, really good counsel. And I think all of us are fairly new council members, or most of us up here are fairly new. So, we really, really appreciated that. I really appreciated that in navigating lots of challenging issues with humor and compassion. And it's just been wonderful working with you. So, thank you so much. We're so grateful.
Thanks, Robyn. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Well, I didn't want to be the only councilmember that didn't have anything to say. So, I do want to say I disagree with councilmember Barber. I don't think you showed up at the right time. I think you showed up about two and a half years too late. But I'm really glad that you did and appreciate everything you've done for us since you've been here. So, thank you. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. And our chief has a word for you as well.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh, he's in trouble now.
I didn't plan on this, but Tony, I'm going to presumptively speak on behalf of the staff, and I'm comfortable doing that because we all say the same things when you're not around. We enjoyed having you here. We're grateful that you came when you did. You did bring, as councilmember Wook said, a sense of calmness and predictability, stability to us. I know that personally, I enjoyed coming upstairs every day just to say, hey, even if there's nothing to say, and exchange some funny moments with you. So, job well done. Appreciate the job you did while you were here, and good luck and good fortune. All right, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thought you were done, we were done, but we're not. So, hold on, I'm coming. I'm coming for you.
Mayor, we have councilmember stores it on the line, too, and he has his hand raised.
I feel so bad now. I can't see you guys. So, I apologize. I've had some tactical difficulties. I've got you up on my computer, but I'm using my phone to call in. So, anyways, Tony, I just wanted to say thank you. Many of us rookie councilmembers have leaned on you, and you've always just come in with a great smile and usually some stories to share, and really helped, I think, you know, guide me and make me feel more comfortable. As I think everybody knows, I have a lot of questions. And so, anyways, I really appreciate it. I hope you enjoy your, what is this, third or fourth retirement? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Seth. And Diane Bertram was so sweet to go out and get some cookies and some waters, and there is a lovely little plant and a balloon for you to also take with you when you leave this evening. So, I will miss your stories the very most, so you better call and tell me some down the road. Okay, and councilmembers, if you could turn your lights off, that would be awesome. And now that he's thoroughly embarrassed, we will go to the city administrators' report.
Well, I want to say thank you very much. Both times I came here, I felt very welcomed. Yes, there were some difficult moments to get through, but we did. But what I'm most grateful for is the support that you showed me and the willingness to actually listen to me, because I have had experiences where some folks think they knew better. Sometimes you listen to what I suggested, sometimes you didn't, but you listen to me, and you ask good questions. That is, that's everything to me. Being able to work with people that care about their community, quite frankly, are smart people who get what it is we're doing, ask good questions, and try to move forward for the best interests of the city. That's, that's everything to me. The staff has been absolutely fantastic, every single one of you. Bright, passionate, committed, wanting to get things right, wanting to understand what the issues were, how council felt, how the mayor felt, and wanting to know how the community felt. You've got a great staff here, and I know you know that, but I want to really make sure you understand that behind the scenes, they are absolutely fantastic from the ground up, every one of them. This is my fourth retirement, maybe I'll get it right this time. And it's probably going to be my last time. I'm really looking forward to doing the retirement thing. I did it for three years before I came back, and I don't know if I would have come back to any other community, because I knew you folks, I knew the issues here, and I felt that I could be useful, that I could make a difference. And I appreciate the sentiments, the comments that you feel that I have contributed. That's, that's what's important to me. So, thank you all very much. I have no further report. I'm ready to let the meeting continue. So, thank you.
Well, then, we would like to stand and applaud you, Tony. Thank you. Okay, now that we're all emotional and everything, we will open public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to read our little reminder here really fast for anyone online. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any specific councilmember. All speakers shall be courteous in their language and deportment and shall not engage in or discuss or comment on personalities or indulge in derogatory remarks or insinuations with regard to any councilmember, the mayor, or any member of the staff or of the public. Thank you so much. And Josh, are there any hands raised online?
We have one hand raised online from a caller, phone number ending in eight seven four.
Okay. And please state your name.
Good evening.
Yes, good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'll give you my name. It's Thomas Wick, and I'm on Hunt Street Northwest. And so what I want to talk about this evening is, I was listening to some of the comments that were made about Mr. Piasseki, and one of them that kind of caught my attention was Ms. Denson's, where she said, we can, you know, he basically gave the assistance so that we can do what's right. That's a quote from Ms. Denson. So, what I wanted to ask is, I wanted to ask the council to, just for a brief moment, consider, and you guys know the issue. I mean, it's the development uphill, no drainage to accommodate it. I asked the prior administration to stop, evaluate the drainage conditions before construction continues, no response. We offered to pay for it, I think it was $10,000 twice, no response. We offered to sell the city the property so they could make it a park, a regional storm facility, right? We don't want to be here for flooded. We don't want to fight you, no response. We offered to work with the city to put in this stormwater conveyance ditch that was reported, that was required, that was documented, that allowed construction to even start in the first place, no response. So, when I listened to the comments from the council earlier, I struggled because the Public Records Act is a state law, and I've put thousands and thousands of dollars on the table for the city of Gig Harbor to pay to acquire the public records for the request dated September 25, 2020. And I'm the only one that can withdraw that request for public records. I have not done so. The city passed ordinance 1465, which means I can't resubmit the request for public records, because I'm in fear that it would be deemed a, quote, fishing expedition, and I've never received the records. And if I did, they would be doled out over an undetermined, unspecified period of time. So, I'm frustrated, and I just wanted to share that frustration this evening, that construction never is allowed to start, and it continued through multiple administrations. That's the disappointment that I have. And the failure to recognize the state law and the idea that a citizen has to file a lawsuit so that a government will actually acknowledge and uphold state law is frightening, very frightening. Thank you, Mayor Markley, for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wick. Are there any other callers that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
I have no other raised hands for this meeting, for this item.
Okay, thank you. We will close the public comment. We'll go to our first item of old business, which is the second reading and adoption of ordinance 1485, approving a biennial budget process. And this will be our finance director, Dave Rodenbach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council. This is the biennial budget ordinance. It's the second reading, and it's no changes from the first reading. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. We have not received any comments over the last two weeks, and I believe it's in order and ready to pass.
Okay, are there any clarifying questions from council? Okay, not seeing any. We will open it up for public comment. Anyone in the audience wish to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, Josh, are there any callers with their hands raised to speak on this item?
We have no hands raised for this item. I'll just remind our callers at home that they can raise their hand by pressing star nine, but I'm not seeing any for this one.
Okay, all right, we will close the public comment. Any council deliberation and action? Councilmember Wook.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know this is important to our staff. It gives them more time to do the work that they need to do. And so, I'm happy this evening to move to approve ordinance number 1485.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. And our first item of new business is the first reading of ordinance 1486, repealing Gig Harbor Municipal Code 2.51, standing committees. And this report comes from our city clerk, Josh Stecker.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, this ordinance is brought to you because at the March 10th City Council Study Session, staff received direction from council that they were ready to repeal the standing committees that had been part of City Council prior to this year. This ordinance is going to repeal Gig Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter 2.51, which spells out the structure and the duties and the individual standing council committees. This repeal of this section kind of set off a little bit of a chain reaction, because there are some references to the council committees throughout the Gig Harbor Municipal Code. So, I'll just quickly go through the sections of this. These are primarily going to affect the different advisory boards that were assigned to be appointed their members by the board and candidate review committee. So, that includes, in section three of the ordinance, it includes the ARS Commission. Section four of the ordinance is the Parks Commission. Section five of the ordinance is the Planning Commission. And then, section six of the ordinance is a reference to our special events code. The Finance and Safety Committee was given an assignment to approve road closure requests. So, in lieu of the Finance and Safety Committee, we assigned that responsibility to the Chief of Police in consultation with the city administrator. In the four years that I'm here, I've been here, I don't think we've ever referred any kind of request for road closure to the Finance and Safety Committee, so I don't think this one is one that comes up all that often. In our edits that we did to the advisory boards in sections three, four, and five, we basically have removed any reference to the appointment process. This ordinance will come back for second reading at our next meeting on April 25th, and at the same time, we'll be bringing back the council guidelines and procedures that will be updated. We'll be discussing that on Thursday in our study session, and we are pretty close to having that ironed out. So, I think we'll be able to approve both of those at the same time. The council guidelines and procedures will have a really more solid outline of the approval process and the appointment process for these boards. So, we're going to take these two at the same time. Other than that, the only other housekeeping thing I'll call out is that in section five of the ordinance, page four of six, if you're looking at the hard copy, the first line for the Planning Commission has been stricken, and it says, pursuant to the authority conferred by chapter 3563 RCW. 3563 RCW does not apply to Code City. So, we've just simply removed that section of that, of that chapter. That's just a housekeeping revision that we've been needing to do for a while. Otherwise, if there's any clarifying questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great, thank you, Josh. Any clarifying questions from council? Okay, I'm not seeing any. How about you, councilmember Storset? Okay, I think he'll say something if he wants to. All right, we will open this up for public comment now. Anyone in the audience wish to give a public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Are there any hands raised online for this item?
No hands raised.
Okay, we will close the public comment. No action will be taken, since this will be a second reading coming back on April 25th. So, that takes us through our new business and into council reports and comments. Anyone from council have anything to add to the meeting tonight? Okay, seeing no lights. Announcement of upcoming meetings, you'll find in the packet online our city meetings calendar and our city of Gig Harbor two-year strategic plan for 2022 to 2023. And so, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.